I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let will call show all four aldermen, city clerk, city attorney, public works director, and chief of police are all present. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So first up, we have Jean Watson. If you would please come to the podium.
I'm here to address the board. I don't know what's coming, and I don't know me from somebody who don't. I'm Jean Watson. I am the president of the Gerald R. Sorkel Society. And we are planning for the eclipse, we're planning to want to shut down the third street from Pine Street to Main. And we're going to have a street affair where you have a van. We're going to have vendors will probably be on the road and street. And we'll have alcohol. And we were going to get permission to shut down the street, and that will be on the 19th of August, 2007. And we've been told...
Is that Cedar Street to Main Street? Cedar runs on the side of the old school.
Okay, Cedar's on that side. Hunt and Cedar. Okay, that's a good one. Yeah, from, okay, it'll be from Cedar Street down to Main Street. More than likely, we won't take in Lonergro's parking lot where they go into their parking lot. We probably won't use that little section. At this point, we're not planning on it now. If we get a lot of vendors or something, we may have to go a little farther. I think that little section that goes on up to Cedar will be planned. And we plan to have our, we're planning to get a flatbed to put a stand on at the school and set it up so that everything's ready to go. I don't know, we're checking on, we're having, we have to get a liquor license or a one-day liquor license. But Carrie and Jeannie have the Cristo, they have a liquor license. And I talked to them, they're checking to see they're going to have the liquor on their ground, which would be in the back right there. Now, whether they can do that with their own liquor license or whether we have to get another one for the day, I don't know. We're working on that. But that stuff, we'll be working on between now and then, which will be on the 19th. And hopefully, we can get some vendors to go out on the street and do some things and that. We've got a few of them going. We're talking about, I don't know. We're tossing things around right now. We haven't made a decision on everything. But we're talking about maybe a ride, a buggy ride or something like that. Just whatever we can put on the streets to attract people. Hopefully, there'll be a lot of people in town that weekend. So that's what we want to get permission for. We were planning to have it from 2 o'clock till midnight.
Does anybody have any questions, please?
I thought the eclipse is on the 21st.
Yeah, eclipse the 21st. But we want to do it on Saturday. We figured the weekend, there will be a lot of people out for the weekend. We'll be staying here Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, hopefully. And hopefully have a big crowd.
Yeah, absolutely. I think.
I make a motion that we... Jane, did you get all that he needs? Everything that you said you needed? I make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We'll have the street shut down for you that day?
Okay.
Two to midnight, you said? Two to midnight that day?
Yes, two to midnight. One will be open, one will be shutting down.
Just be sure and keep in touch with Steve Goodwin, please.
Yeah.
The chief of police.
Okay.
I was going to say, just as this thing develops, just make sure that the city's aware of it, you know? Because it may get really big.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tina, if you'd like to come to the podium, please?
My questions are directed to Mr. Lucas. We have a city plan. Well, we had a plan that only we knew last two weeks ago. And I was not fully aware of some of the things. So I wanted to ask you a few questions. I did call Franklin County, and they said that it was up to each town to have their own city plan. And it doesn't have to be recorded, but you can record, they can record it for you if you want to. And the city plan, I think it's something that, some of the things on there that we need. But I was told that it had to be approved by the Board of Aldermen before, well, as this plan goes into effect. Is that correct?
No, that is not correct. So the state law, it's 89360 is the State Enabling Act. And that like walks, walks out, walks through exactly the procedure for adopting a comprehensive plan. And it's going to be, it's not recorded with the office, the reporter of deeds for Franklin County, but it's filed. It's a special procedure. So it still has to be certified, and a copy of the plan itself will go to the recorder's office. They just don't actually record the plan itself. As far as adoption by the Board of Aldermen, it's a planning commission document. And adoption pursuant to the Enabling Act is through the Planning Commission, not the Board of Aldermen.
Okay, so when I was told that in order for the city plan to go through or adopted, whatever's on there that was said Tuesday is going to be in the city plan? Because it doesn't have to be approved by the Board of Aldermen, is that correct?
I don't think I understand your question.
Okay, the city plan that was adopted, that they want, that we want to adopt?
Yeah, so nothing has been adopted as of right now?
Right, because the plan that we have in progress?
The draft?
Yes.
Okay.
Everything on there will be part of the city plan? Or the Board of Aldermen will have to change, they will be able to change? Or the Board of Aldermen has nothing to do with it?
So, okay, sorry.
I'm trying to talk to you.
No, you're fine. I understand where you're coming from. It's kind of confusing. I'm talking about like the legal requirements procedurally according to state law. But as far as like what the city wants to do as far as involvement and public engagement, it's my understanding that we want to have a transparent process, and we want everyone to be involved. As far as input, public input, right now, there's a draft. There's not an actual, there's no, there's not, no plan has been adopted. As far as like involvement from the Board of Aldermen, the mayor, anyone in the community, it's always best practice, it's the, it's a policy guide, a document for the vision of the community over the next 20 to 25 years. So in my opinion, it's always best practice to be transparent and let anybody that wants to be involved and have their voice heard have input on it. But as far as the legal process of adopting the plan itself, that body is going to be the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission only. It doesn't mean the Planning Commission should exclude the voice of the Board of Aldermen, the mayor, or residents for that matter. If anything, I think the opposite. I believe that the public should be involved from day one. I believe that the Board of Aldermen, the mayor should be involved. I believe anybody that wants to be involved should be involved. But at the end of the day, in order to legally have it adopted, you have to follow the enabling statute, which is again 89360. And anybody can look at that statute. It's pretty clear. And now I kind of feel like I'm going in circles, but does that help answer your question? I mean, I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I was hesitant to make my decision when they presented the city plan.
What decision is that?
Everyone voted, I'm sorry, four people voted yes on going ahead with the city plan. One said no, and I said okay.
And what is, I'm sorry, what does going ahead with it mean exactly?
Going ahead...
Are you just wanting to know if this is already cut and stone, Tina? Are you, are you wanting to know if this is just cut and stone, and that's all there is too? Is that basically what you're asking them?
What's on those pieces of papers, what I was told was that anything can be adjusted on there by the Board of Aldermen.
So, okay, I was, I was not at the P&amp;Z meeting, so I don't know all the facts that we're talking about, just so that everybody understands. But this right now is a draft document that I believe is for review. Well, let's, if we can get our liaison from the Board of Aldermen and P&amp;Z's...
What I, what I had wished to convey at the P&amp;Z was that because we have no budget of our own, that we had to bring the document to the board and request budget funding so that we could, the P&amp;Z could hold our own public hearing. And that is what the motion was, was to bring it to the board. The items on the draft is basically what we were submitting here. But as we discussed all along with this, it's always been open, and it was always, the final, the final aspect of it is each year, it gets reviewed by the Board of Aldermen before budget is established. And if we can move forward on some of this, we move forward. If we can't, at least the board is aware that they have to consider.
But I thought the board had nothing to do with the actual plans that are on the paper.
Well, the, so the Board of Aldermen, you mean?
Right.
The Board of Aldermen has a lot to do with the actual plans. But the plan itself, the comprehensive plan, is not a legally binding document. It's a policy guide. So as far as like policy for future development and decisions for the city, the board's the legislative body, so they're going to be involved in every decision. And in order, like for zoning, for example, it's, even though it's not a legally binding document, a court, if they're going to review a zoning decision made by the Board of Aldermen, they're going to make sure that the board looked at the comprehensive plan as a factor in determining their decision. So it's, it's not a legally binding document itself, but the board would be involved in implementing the plan to the extent that they feel that it's necessary and in the best interest of the city.
So anything on that plan can be taken away?
The plan can be amended, yeah. In each year, it's the, and the plan does not have to be followed to a T, but you have to have a reasonable basis for making your decisions when you're the Board of Aldermen, the legislative body, and you're making like a zoning decision, for example. The standard is deferential standard, which basically means is your decision reasonable? And the biggest factor they look at to determine if the board's decision is reasonable is, is it, you know, in accordance with the comprehensive plan? So the plan itself is not a document that per se gets enforced, but it does get implemented. And different states actually have different views as far as whether or not it's legally binding. For example, California, it's a legally binding document. The state of Arizona, the comprehensive plan is a legally binding document. A lot of that has to do with water shortages. So they want to make sure that there's adequate water and enough water for everyone. The state of Missouri, the state of Kansas, it's not a legally binding document. That's why it's adopted by the administrative body, which is the Planning Commission, and not the Board of Aldermen. But right now, I think there's some misinformation, miscommunication. What we have, like right here, what Tom just held up, is a draft of this document that we're talking about. And it's, to my knowledge, this is a draft still up for review and discussion. It's, that's what I'm, my understanding of the situation.
Well, that's not exactly what I... Because you told me, I was trying to make my decision, and you told me that whatever's on here, it's still going to have to go through the Board of Aldermen in order for them to make the final decision.
They have to decide whether or not we get the funding to post the legal notice so that we can hold the hearing, okay?
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the actual city plan that you had. And I'm saying there's some things on here that I agree with, and there's some things that I don't agree with.
Okay.
And you specifically said that, let me explain this to you, is what you said. The Board of Aldermen has the final decision. And that is not, that is not what I was told.
Okay, the Board of Aldermen had the final decision at budget time?
On budget, yes.
Yes. And it is just merely a guideline. But we cannot, we cannot call it the city plan until a public hearing is held.
Yeah, the public hearing has to be held by the body who's going to be adopting the plan, which is the Planning and Zoning Commission. So the Planning and Zoning Commission holds the public hearing. And if, again, I wasn't there, if someone told you that it has to be adopted or approved by the Board of Aldermen, and you interpreted that or it was meant to be interpreted to mean the actual document itself, that's not, that's not accurate. Again, the adoption is by the Planning and Zoning Commission. But, and the Planning and Zoning Commission has not adopted the document as of yet because we haven't gone through the procedural requirements, including a public hearing, public notice.
Okay, well, that's not the way it was presented to me. Is that the way you guys understood? Mr. Adams?
I'm on the Planning and Zoning. Last month, we went line by line on everything on that. People on Planning and Zoning had a chance to voice their opinions. Some of them had issues with some of that stuff. Well, this month, we bring the plan, and they're telling us that this is the plan. This is the plan. I heard no word draft anywhere. This is the plan. We're going to take it up to the public hearing, present it to the people. I was the long no vote, just so everyone knows. I have issues on that, that I have with it. And I don't think that this is the final plan that should be presented.
So if I may jump in real quick, when I say draft, I always, any document, in my opinion, is a draft until it gets adopted. So like the draft ordinances that we have, there are always going to be a draft until the board adopts it.
But we went through a two-step process.
What was that?
We went over what the committee brought to Planning and Zoning, we went line by line. And each member was asked whether they had, you know, whether this suited them or whether they were going to change. Were there any changes made on the subsequent meeting, just so verbiage added? And now they said, this is the plan.
Okay.
Mr. Travis, if you could please stand, please.
Second.
I would just ask him if you could stand, please.
Just take my name. The first time it was presented, two months ago, which would have been in the October meeting, we presented what the committee had finished, a finished product from the committee for the Planning and Zoning Board's approval. And several people said they would like to add some things. Ed objected to two particular lines on the plan. But it passed by vote to go back to the Planning and Zoning and add what was on there. I don't know that we ever said, when we went, when we took it back to the meeting, the committee, the ad hoc committee that put the plan together, was pretty adamant that they wanted to keep it as it was. I think what Tina has misunderstood, and I want to make clear, that this is a planning and zoning document presented, it was created by an ad hoc committee, presented planning and zoning. It's still not a firm document, obviously, because we're having a public hearing. And there'd be no need for a public hearing if there was no leeway in the plan. You know, we want to hear the public's plan. But the two items that Ed objected to, that the committee was very firm, they wanted to keep it in place. However, that doesn't mean that any of you are forced to ever implement those lines. That is totally up to the Board of Aldermen. It's up to the Planning and Zoning Board to approve the document. But it's up to the Board of Aldermen to implement the document. You know, they can't, because it says we want a swimming pool, doesn't mean, and we didn't say that, doesn't mean that the Board of Aldermen would ever be forced to fund or build a swimming pool. It's just a suggestion for them to think about, as is every single item on the plan. And you know, this ad hoc committee has been working since February. We've had several public hearings, we handed out surveys. At the public hearing, there was very little response from city officials or even from the Planning and Zoning Board. They had a chance then to come work and have some input, but we had nothing. So we worked hard to create the plan, and it is just a recommendation to the Board of Aldermen. Taken from, and we talked to hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people, not just jail residents, but business people, people that bring their kids to jail for soccer. You know, everybody we can think of, we got their input on what they'd like to see for the city of jail.
Yeah, so if I may, I think that was a good, a good summary. I agree with everything you just said as far as implementation and the P&amp;Z and their role in this. If, if there's anything in the plan itself that through, implementation doesn't take place until after adoption. So right now, it's my opinion, it's always going to be best practice to get everyone's input and everyone's voice. And if someone has a problem with it, I think that person, you know, should, should be heard. And everyone should come together to decide what's in the best interest. But at the end of the day, you don't want to just have it sitting on the shelf or never move forward without having a document because it's only for the benefit of the city. It's a, the purpose of it is a policy guide for the shared visions of the entire community. So if that's not what we have before us, then it's probably not a very good document. If that is the document we have before us, or we're in that process, I would suggest we continue the process. But there's absolutely no requirement that the board accepts or rejects anything. Right now, this is, this is, this is an opportunity for the board to review. And it's not a review tonight, it's a review at the board's leisure, you know, until the planning, until there's a public hearing, until the requirements are met for the P&amp;Z to actually move forward and adopt it. Because if the requirements aren't met, then the plan doesn't, it's not going to be, it's not going to have any force at all anyway.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. If I may, the vote at the P&amp;Z was to bring the draft, the final draft that what you had, up here and to seek just the funding to get the public hearing done. Because we have to have the public hearing before it can go any further. After it is adopted, approved, each year, these people, which will change, you know, 10 years from now, if budget allows us to do something further. As we discussed at the P&amp;Z, there's a lot of volunteer aspect that is in there that could be implemented. Future plans with our existing lagoon that is going to be filled in, leveled out. We have discussed taking our debris and stuff up there. Right now, it's in that little alleyway to the west of the old lagoon, which doesn't provide us all-weather access. But there are certain aspects of the city plan, as was precedent at the P&amp;Z, that can be done under a volunteer basis or minimal amount of city expenditure. The recycling, the big trash pickup, that's, that type of stuff. All of it, all this is, is to get the funds so we can go ahead and have the public hearing.
And once, once the document is adopted, I'm not just talking for the city of Gerald, just in general, it's state requirement. Once the Planning and Zoning Commission adopts the document, each year, it's statutorily required for the Planning and Zoning Commission to review the document and determine if it's in the best interest of the city to amend the document or keep it as is based on the desires and goals and visions of the community.
And those seats will change too. The objection to some of the items at today may not be an objection three years from now. People move on. Things change. If we're going to be progressive, or if we're going to be forward-looking, or if we're going to be whatever it is for the next administration, either at the P&amp;Z level or at the city board level, to make that decision. But we can't go any further without funding to hold a public hearing.
Does anybody else in the audience have public comments tonight? So next up is approving our minutes from the 10:13 regular scheduled meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Do I have? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? And then from the October 28 special minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Next up, we have our bills for November. Does anything, anybody have anything for court, any questions about court? Any questions about general?
We are totally out of the humane society's dictum, right? These will be the last two surrenders that the city will ever take.
This?
Well...
Yes, sir.
I mean, ever's a...
That's a long time.
We know, we currently don't have any...
This was the September bill, and our agreement ended October 8th with them. So if there was a chance that any were taking him up to that point, then we would still have those. But if I have not received any...
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else under general? Under planning and zoning? Under police? Street? Sewer? Water or transportation? Do I have a motion to approve the November bills?
I make a motion, will you approve the bills?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Who has a second from yet?
Opposed, nay? I'm sorry, I don't know your name. Wait, do you have anything for us tonight since Mr. Kate is not present?
Yeah, Nick has, has been, has been commenting a little bit about the storm sewer that he's going to talk a little bit about trying to get funding, I think. And possibly have us give you a cost estimate for our defined fee, seeing what that would be. So I was just going to kind of talk about, so everybody kind of knows, you know, what the general project would be. I'm starting off. We have funding left over after all the streets were completed. So we have a little bit, we might be able to install some stormwater. It's a big issue. You know, just North Ridge alone, we spent about $1,600 in the past year preparing for that road because we walked over that bridge to back it up in that creek. So that's why I like to request them to give a quote, see what they've charged to kind of, they will work within the town with the big creeks, actually start gathering all the water and then start working back in the town a little bit. So basically, as far as phasing the construction, you know, Nick mentioned the north ridge up here, and there's also down here six to five, some stormwater problems. And you can phase those however you want it as far as construction. You could do, you know, a piece of this, like you're saying, whatever piece you could afford. You could do some of this, some of this. But it's our opinion that for the design of it, you probably want to do all that at once just because you would be doing like some stormwater calculations. So you have to look at the whole area anyways, see how much water is coming down there. So you wouldn't necessarily phase the engineering in phases unless you wanted to do the north and then the south, if these are separate water beds. So just to give an idea of what it would be, we've already done a lot of topographic surveying along here. So that, but we haven't done any of that up here. So it would be quite a bit of surveying, basically along this channel here. One question too, is something that the city would be... One question, too, is something that the city would be taking on, structure, or do you want documents to bid out? Probably go with the bid out option, just in case, just to give a project first, go handle.
In discussing this, a great problem is the trees and stuff that are actually in the creek bed at North Ridge. The issues at Highway H at Six, that had, was discussed by Terrace when we did Six Street. So, we already know what we virtually have to do at Six.
And that's why we have that surveyed already.
Right, but the last big rain at North Ridge, the homeowner immediately, immediately to the west of the creek, he had water probably within 15 feet of his house, and his side yard is 50 feet or so, 60 feet.
Terrace had mentioned that on the Six Street creek issue, that we might get a permit from the foreengineers. So, that's why I wanted to make sure that we cover all our bases before we started just attacking the creek. Yeah, just to let you know, I mean, that's just more of what we would be doing for the city. We need some foreengineering permits for when you cross H here, everything, dig that out of the town, all filled in. And then also, I think, here you might have to do similar things.
I was gonna say, on the north end, it's definitely blue water, so that will have to be addressed. But in having to repair the street year after year after year, because the culvert is too low, was put in too low at the time, wasn't constructed properly to begin with, that is an ongoing issue.
And, and part of our design is gonna actually, you know, size it over to make sure the size is appropriately, and give recommendations if, if they're not. Okay, so, and then also, there could possibly be also some easement required, that'd be part of this, too. Now, I don't know, maybe not up here, but I think Terrace mentioned down here on Pine to Main, I believe, that we might need to lay some easements along there, if we decide to route something, that's already, that's all part of the design, and importantly, the city, I think that's, you know, we want to do. And that's really, like, all I had, I mean, you can see here, it sounds like we already were, but we do have, you know, all the surveying done, so this is, this is Highway H, and this is Main. So, we've been doing something similar to this up here on North Ridge, also. So, if you were to choose one of them, engineering-wise, I would assume that down here would be the key one, because the surveying is already done.
Mr. Yeo, did you have a question, son?
Yeah, you were mentioning that six...
If you could please stand up, sorry.
You were mentioning that Six Street and H, you're gonna dump it into that creek, from up there. But that's on my, it's already getting flooded.
That's what I wanted to address, when, when it crossed the H.
Yeah, that's on my property, I mean, I have bridges and everything washed out, creeks getting washed out, and I'm getting flooded out. So, I mean, it's gotta, it's gotta go somewhere else instead of me.
Yeah, I mean, we'll pull that, I mean, we'll look at...
Because, you know, it's on the other side of me, mine's clear, it's the other side, other side of the property that's gotta be taken care of. I mean, I just don't want, you know, I wouldn't feel the flood, right?
That's the intention, Brian, though, we're wanting to work from, say, your problem area and start pushing back to town, because of the issues, there we go.
Okay.
Yeah, this isn't gonna be anything, we're just gonna start bringing stuff to you, where it's just trying to start there, if what that would be.
I feel a little better, okay, I mean, I have my, I have my lathe back in my house, like, I get it quick.
And you gotta push to find the street?
Yeah, we're gonna pile it all up right there, around 614.
Thank you.
A lot, I was gonna say, a lot of that, as he mentioned, is already engineered, it's just a matter of implementing. And until we get a firm grasp of where our budget's at, primarily, all we wanted to do, as he and I discussed, was try and take some of the brush out, because that was the obvious answer at North Ridge. The stuff flowed down, people pile their trash in a, in a wash, it washes to the nearest creek, it goes to the culvert, blacks up at the culvert, overflows the road, peels up the pavement, goes to the other side, packs into the trees, and all it does is disperse it. So, winter time's the time to do that, you cut the trees out, you eliminate the low-hanging branches, you remove the brush, and it becomes a clearer, but that, that's no solution. The solution is making it so streamlined. Now, we realize that at some point, we're pushing it outside the county, because the property line on the Lion's property, although the Lion sits up higher, we don't wanna create an erosion problem. So, all of the engineering that has to be done, we don't wanna do it piecemeal, per se, but we wanna be able to get far enough along, so that if our budget only says we can do this self-work at a later time, then during periods of slack or whatever, we can accomplish that.
And that's why, basically, I was gonna say approve the engineering permits, start getting numbers together. And what we can do, too, you know, well, ultimately, ultimately, make a set of specs and drawings and a bid package to bid out. When we do that, we can have different line items in there for the bids of different pieces, so we'll have a real good idea, and then, if you get all the bids back, you'll know how many, how much each piece costs, so it'll help you to plan that out, too.
Do you guys have, like, a general vote between, you know, nothing real narrow, on what the design fee normally runs?
No, I, Terrace probably has an okay idea, because he would at least know with the surveying, you know, how much time that took down here, and, and surveying is another one of those things, if that's better to do in the winter, and I'm also, if you don't leave on the, on the trees, so anytime you're doing a project, if you're doing a survey, you know, fall, that's a good time to do it. But we can get you, I mean, we'll get you a number within a few, like, next, next week, if I...
Okay, thank you.
Do you need a motion from the Board to, to get, you can start working to get numbers? Do you need a motion from the Board, so we can have some time to get numbers? Do you want, you guys want to make a motion so Integrity can start getting numbers?
I'll make a motion that Integrity can start getting numbers together, so we can kinda see how the budget's gonna go for... Jane has all that down.
The design fee?
Yes.
The design fee.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Nick, do you have anything else for us tonight?
Yeah, I have a quote here from Rosebud Tractor, we have four cylinders leaking on the new hall and backhoe, and I got a quote here for $994.91 for the seal kit, for us to rebuild the cylinder, all four of them. So, I was gonna request Board of Adgroup, we're gonna get those seal kits, we'll get those fixed.
By repairing the equipment that we have, and it costs roughly a grand, plus whatever labor's involved, we are saving, because we're not going back and giving a leased piece of equipment. The lease last year cost us in excess of $7,000, plus the turnaround, because the turnaround was in the neighborhood of $1,800 bucks before we even give it back. It's our piece of equipment that we're working on, so in a sense, although we're spending money, it is money well spent.
Do I have a motion for Nick to be able to buy the...
I make a motion that Nick procure the seal kit for the repair of the backhoe.
I'll second that.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Do you wanna go ahead and get those, Nick?
Okay, thank you. And I also kind of decided to gain an engineer's piece that we get the streets all done, so.
They look good, thank you.
They drive great.
I've gotten lots of compliments, everybody's coming in, I, I actually have something nice to tell you for once, I'm like, thank you.
So, I have to drive one, sure.
Anything else for you tonight?
We are working on the Christmas lights, I don't know what it's gonna cost yet, hopefully not too much. There's a lot of them that don't work, so we're gonna try to get those repaired before, see if they work.
If you didn't know, we had LEDs for Christmas lights this year, for last year, and they're damaged. Whereas in the past, we had the little screw-in light bulbs, heavy wire, we spent a little bit more on the lighting and everything, but when the bulb burned out, you put a new bulb in. With the LEDs, when they burn out, or if they become damaged, you have to restring them with another rope of LED. So, I'm not sure that we have an actual savings, but if this is gonna be a yearly expenditure, because it's only been one year, if this is gonna be a yearly expenditure, maybe it's something we need to look into about going back to the old style.
That's actually what I'm having a quote, like Rosebud has, there's actually the C7s that wrap around it, and that's what I'm getting a quote to replace these, because it's just too much time involved in trying to restring these LEDs.
Yep, 'cause didn't you last year fix all of them?
Yeah, we fixed like eight or nine last year, and now we got a lot more.
I'm thinking you guys were tender taking them down.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I agree with that, go back to the old lights on them, and that way, one burns out, you can go back with something else.
It'll be a lot more cost-effective for the city in the long run, as far as our labor gain, just the material cost.
Where's that funding coming from, Jane?
Street department?
Street funds.
Have we got money?
Hell.
Well, I would think those lights would be cheaper than keep buying the LED lights every year.
Yeah, we, I mean, a box of bulbs, I think it's like 15 bucks for 50 of them, and we go through like two boxes a year before, and now we're gonna have to buy whole strands LEDs, and it's just...
What's the LED strands cost, you remember from last year, approximately?
Well, I was only able to repair, I think, two or three with the actual just LEDs, and then I bought the, just the regular traditional lights you find in your house and wrapped it, and once we get them up, and we spent like $200 on that, so.
Anything else for us tonight?
Nope.
Mr. Yeo, do you have anything else, Nick?
Well, I'd like to follow up with Tina, if I can, real quick. I have the, I just wanted to do this, this is the adoption procedure in the state statute, and I've drawn down some notes to kinda summarize, but if you have any questions, follow-up or whatever, feel free to let me know, try to answer as best I can.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Steve, chief?
I put a piece of paper up under you guys' desk, a little bit of what went on for the number 13 part. It was a press release, it was a little paper. Also, the other thing I have is, we have one application for a reserve officer. He actually passed his test today, Josh, which I put just one copy up there, we got four of them. Josh, he's in the fire department, ambulance, all, a great guy all around, he's been in the army, several different, you know, commendations, awards. He is actually graduating Tuesday, and he actually asked me to see if we can get this passed, so I can, you know, pin his badge on at graduation. He's just a reserve officer, only volunteer, you know, just to see if you can get him passed. He's a great guy, so, I mean, he's been writing up here while he's going through the academy, I'd say almost every other day, he's been here.
But being on reserve doesn't cause the city any...
Nothing.
Nothing, right?
I make a motion that we, is, is this a hire room, is this what we call it?
It's just on reserve, not a hire.
Doesn't, on reserve?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion that we reserve him.
I'll second, I'll second, okay.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Jane, do you get these?
If you would like to watch out now. I'm sure you'll be excited, because he's only been on me for the past month.
And when is he, when do you pin his badge?
His graduation is, I believe, September 7th.
Hold on, I got a social security number on it.
Tell him we all say congratulations and welcome.
I was asked to see if we can add a yield sign or a stop sign at the intersection of Pear Tree and West Springfield, which is Pear Tree coming out of there. There was no stop sign, no type of yield sign for coming out of the trailer park. Got a couple complaints about people just flying out of that, without stopping, walking, and there was a small crest in that roadway coming from, you know, Eastbound side. So, if we could maybe add that, the city attorney could maybe hand that to our list. The other intersection would be Third Street Apartments and Cedar Street. That intersection coming off the Third Street Apartments there. I know with Nick and them working over there, doing the payment, I wanna say there was a pretty close call.
That would take somebody coming up Cedar Street, because, yeah, it does need to, that's what I was saying.
Somebody coming out of those apartments, if, even if it's a yield sign or a stop sign right there, you know, see if we can add one of those, that other intersection to it.
I think it should probably be stop sign.
I was gonna say...
Yeah, I think it should probably be stop signs.
At, at the cost of the sign, that's the only difference, because the installation cost remains the same.
And while you're saying that, Mr. Shellhammer, who lives across the street from me, said he's gotten almost hit twice, and that would be Cedar and Fifth. They don't yield, and he has the yield, and he said, "I don't start until there's nothing there," because, or they have the yield and he doesn't, and he said, "I don't know how many times I've just about gotten hit." He, too, has asked for either more yield signs or stop signs. And I know since our road has been done, the people going east and west on that new road, they are flying down there, they're going 30 or 35 miles an hour, and we've got kids on that street. Jason's kids are there, the little kids from up the street are riding the bikes on, everybody's on that street now with their bikes, 'cause it's so good. We're gonna have a tragedy, we need to have something, I think, maybe stop signs, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I know they've been doing a lot of traffic control over on the Cedar Street from the industrial park. So, you know, unless we put another stop sign up there, I don't know.
I don't know either, except...
They've gotta take some responsibility here, we can't have real stops and stop signs all over town, 'cause it's good.
But I understand that, but I picked up twice this week, car parts that are falling off the cars from them not stopping, coming from north to south, because they won't stop. I picked up two big chunks of car part from under their car in the street. Yeah, and they hit that, and I mean, you just think, oh, Lauren, that car's not gonna make it, I mean... Oh, you can, and if their window's down, you can hear them yelling and cussing, "I don't think fix that street." Well, we did.
Should we put some children's play signs on Sixth Street?
Once again, if you're gonna put a sign, it's gonna cost the same thing. So, either we're a city of stop signs, or we're a city of yield, and when you're a city of yield, it's, he said, she said, when you do an accident investigation, whereas a stop sign is more pronounced. You know, because you can't be traveling 15 miles an hour to T-bone somebody in the breath of a stop sign.
Did I say stop sign?
You said yield, but I'm saying...
Children's play.
Children's play.
Is that what you said?
Yeah.
What if we do that?
All I'm saying, all I'm saying is, if you're gonna sink a post, you...
Yeah, if we do that, then we're gonna have to put them on every street, corner in town.
Because then somebody's gonna want on East Springfield, 'cause that's all kids, too.
Right.
Yes, Jason?
Why don't you just set a police car down there, watch the stop sign between, like, rush hour, when you go off work, at random, and you send it down there, random will slow down, it'll have any, no idea, and you're gonna be just sitting down there.
But at rush, it's not just at rush hour anymore, Jason, it's all day long. I sit out on my front porch, I can count 30 cars that do not stop. At your stop sign or at ours. Yeah, it's... I'm sure.
When you're no longer dodging potholes, or worried about hitting potholes, the speed naturally increases. So, either a more pronounced enforcement, but once they see you, the word goes out. A stop sign, if it's a, if they run a stop sign... A stop sign, if it's a, if they run a stop sign, they get ticketed. If they come to a stop sign and proceed, nobody's going to get to a maximum speed. So as the board, we need to decide if we're going to stick a children at play or a yield, we might as well be a stop sign.
If they don't read stop signs, they're not going to read a children at play.
I agree with you. I agree with you. But you cannot ticket somebody until they hit a child.
I, and that's what I'm saying. The skateboarding on our street has just picked up. And it's not the parents. I mean, sure, they're going to say stay off to the side. But Ruth, I remember when I was a kid, I rode down the middle of the street here in Gerald and...
You only had to worry about horses then though.
You're right, it was a horse. It was floatment's horses we'd ride them into town.
Parents have to take some responsibility for their kids.
But Ruth, they can tell them till they're blue in the face, stay on this...
Maybe they're out there watching them.
Ruth, it's in the middle of the day. They have things to do.
I think I just my six to seven year old kid outside if they go out playing without knowing where they're at.
Well, then you're living in a world that is not real because that's what they do today. That's, and as a city, we are responsible for those kids. Whether their parents are telling them what to do or not. I mean, it's just, it's a sad fact. We have to protect them.
What do you think, Steve? No, I mean, what do you think as far as the stop signs or whatever? What do you think? You're the one that has to control them.
There's already...
There's two stops, yeah.
You're out and about where she's talking about. Do you think, is it a stop sign? Need a stop sign?
Yield.
Six of Walnut. And you got one right by Jason's house, which is Pine and Sixth. So if you put one right there, you're going to almost be stopping at every block going down.
Well, can't we just...
We can step up enforcement.
Yeah, I was going to say, can we set up enforcement over there for a while?
Yeah.
For a while, but as soon as you're gone, they're back. Well, they watch those guys.
Why don't you step it up? And if you think there's a stop sign that needs to be there, then we'll put a stop sign there.
I mean, we did the same thing with Walnut. After Walnut was paved, we had a lot of complaints over there, sat over there. Some people got tickets and then, you know, a lot of people got warnings. And so I told you just do the same thing with Sixth Street.
Mr. Lucas?
How come we can't just reduce all the yield signs and put stop signs in places? I mean, the yield signs, I mean, that's, like you said, it's a hearsay sheet. So I imagine you should just replace them all.
Money?
Well, you're going to have to put other signs up anywhere else.
Yeah, but you're not going to, you have to replace them. If you've got something up there right now, you're not, you know, that's the whole deal whether you put a yield or a stop sign up. If there's a place that there's not anything, that's why I say put a stop sign up there versus a yield sign.
To your, to your point about Pear Tree and West Fitzgerald. It is a little crest. They are exiting to the location of Third Street Apartment, Cedar and Third Street. That also probably needs a stop sign.
So you just want a motion for them to draw up the ordinance?
Say what now?
We need a motion to draw up an ordinance to add the stop signs, to amend our code book, to add those in.
Yeah, we could, I mean, we definitely need an ordinance to amend the traffic code. So if we want to have a motion to pursue that, we can do that, I'm sure.
So can we just have one ordinance that would...
If you look at like the ordinance book, there's somewhere added like intersections for stop signs. They have everything in there.
Right.
So I don't know, would you just add that?
We can amend the traffic code, right?
Okay. Just add it with the...
That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, with one, with one ordinance, the...
Could be continual? Or every time we want to change a stop sign, a yield sign to a stop sign, do we have to amend every single time?
We do, yes. But I'm saying with one ordinance, if we, for example, wanted to add five or four, three stop signs, we can do that with one.
And again, this cost of directing the ordinance. So if we're going to do it, if we go deep in our pocket to do it on Sixth Street, Pine Tree, Third Street Apartments, we're biting the bullet today.
Yeah, and...
No, we're opening our wallet today. But by doing it now, we are saving the cost of the ordinance.
And Fifth Street going east and west. They're yield signs now. And that's who's running the signs. And they're running it and Bill's going north and south.
I mean, we're getting way too many here going.
Cedar and Fifth is the intersection.
I think what it meant to say is getting rid of the yield signs over there on Fifth.
Because they're just running them and...
I mean, do we have this in our budget right now to get all this done? I mean, we're spending money quicker than...
All right. The cost, transportation cost, the paving came in cheaper, so we have...
This will not come out of that. This comes out of the general funds.
You know, we're talking about...
This does not come out of transportation.
We're talking about, you know, without looking deeper into the budget.
The cost of the signs can come out of transportation, but the ordinance drafting comes out of general funds.
Right. But whether we type six lines or 20 lines on the ordinance, the cost is better.
I mean, can we wait and see what our budget is and then go and do some of the, do all these stop signs?
Do some...
Do some crunching here and see where we got the money to do this instead of jumping into it real quick tonight? I mean, because we brought up a bunch of different places here in town. Let's see what we have in our budget before we go ahead and do this.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not against it, but I'm thinking we need to slow down here and see...
And maybe between now and our budget meeting, Steve could even, or Chief could even drive around and see what are problem areas in town, where we need to switch from yield signs to stop signs, where we need more stop signs or more stop signs or whatever.
Okay. I agree with you fully about waiting to see where the budget money is, okay? In the meantime, we need to do a concerted effort to get every trouble spot, whether it be changing yields to stops or new signage at the locations that he's mentioned. We need to consider that. And then the final result is, in the meantime, for Sixth Street, if that says that they're speeding, let's do a saturation aspect. And no more warnings. If they're speeding, they're speeding.
Yeah, and watch, like you said, watch Pear Tree till then and watch Bill going on Cedar Street or whatever and see, you know, if you catch them, ride them up or whatever, or give them the warning.
Well, there is, there is nothing at Pine and Pear Tree.
There's nothing at Pear Tree. There's nothing that says they have the yield or they have to stop. Tom says that the other people have the right of way, but...
Mr. Lucas?
Okay, this section, we're not tabling it, or we, what do we do?
We table it till we hear from Steve.
Further research, further research for the budget meeting.
I make a motion that we table the traffic stop sign.
Do we need a motion on that?
If we're going to table it...
Do we need a, do we have to table? Okay.
Because it's not on the agenda.
It was not on the agenda, it was just something brought up here.
I have a question for Mr. Lucas real quick.
Sure.
If, if we go ahead and order the signs, because we got the money we know for that, can't I put them in places, can't enforce them and tell us an ordinance? Or should we just not even attempt that?
I wouldn't install them if we're not going to enforce them.
Okay. I was thinking that way people would actually just at least try to start stopping before you can enforce it.
I mean, I don't know. I'd be curious to get the Chief's opinion. But I mean, if you're not going to enforce it, I would think that it would be kind of silly to install it.
Yeah. Yeah, if it's a stop sign, what if you get one?
Well, yeah, if there's a wreck and it's not an ordinance, that's us.
It might get them start stopping at least in...
Yeah, it's, I mean, I think actually the Chief's discretion would be better as far as than mine. Because if you're not going to legally enforce it, the warnings, that's a good point. If you think it would be a deterrent, then it makes sense.
Because I go to get the signage then, and then as far as the ordinance end of it, we'll see where the budget lies.
Can we do that with our ability?
Well, if we're not, that's what I said, if we're not enforcing it...
If we're installing it, then it's not in our code book. I'm just asking.
Well, we, it's, it's, we wouldn't be enforcing it. So we wouldn't be modifying the code book. But it's, it would be unusual. So...
I'd just say not put them up yet.
I was going to say, if it would be unusual, I don't want anybody taking advantage.
Yeah, I guess if there was an accident, it's going to be like, well, they didn't stop this stop sign.
There's probably unintended consequences, so it's best to probably just...
Yeah, we'll just wait.
But I try to be proactive.
Anything else tonight? Jane, did you have anything for us tonight?
Yeah.
Mr. Lucas?
No.
Okay, so moving right along. Next up, we have our, under unfinished business, we have our property insurance allocation of expenses. Does everybody look at them? Do you kind of want to explain?
Yeah, I gave you guys the breakdown list. We have not got our, our final numbers back as of yet. These are just prospective tentative numbers for allocation. And you guys have talked about allocating the expenses to each individual piece instead of the general funds paying these. So these were, this is what the allocations would be. So it's up to you guys what you want to do.
Everything that pertains to the city. Because we can control the persons. It's a matter of just pushing a pencil here and there. The issue with the park, that's going to need to be resolved. When the park was present, they were told that the city was being, not dire straits, but not exactly rich. So they were supposed to go back and do some renegotiation or clarification with the different entities of the park. The sports, athletics, the saddle club, this, that, and the other. Until we hear from them, I'm not sure, other than we can decide...
Because we cannot move forward with the budget until this is made.
I know. So we, we can decide at this moment whether we're going to assume it all this year and adjust next year, or assume half of it this year and make them assume half of it. Unless you hold their feet to the fire.
We couldn't do a half and half.
Uh-huh.
We couldn't do, it's either one way or the other.
Your part?
Splitting it, you know, expense, half and half.
Present? Right, you're right. You explained that to me before. You're right. We can't hold their money to get the full benefit. For the audience's point of view or knowledge, the city park, because it doesn't belong to the city, is an entity of itself, gets its budget in totality from the city. The city itself manages the park in the sense that we are responsible through our door. When a pavilion is rented or the building is rented, they actually use our water clerk to do all of this. It takes time out of our day, out of their day, and thus we are out of pocket expense. Presently, the city park is paying us back on a loan for their lawn mower. At this time, it may be paid. But law says that we cannot withhold unless there's a legal obligation. And the moment the legal obligation is fulfilled, they get to do with their budget what they're, what is allocated to them. So... Getting back to budgeting, either we, the board, accept the full responsibility this year or we don't. We say that the park is responsible for this. I'm not sure what recourse there is for the city if the park says what we can afford to pay. I don't know if we end up suing ourselves virtually or what. I'm not sure what that happens, how that happens. But I do know that the park board needs to get more proactive in dealing with this.
I think the park board should pay for their insurance this year.
I agree.
Have we not heard back from them at all? Okay.
I mean, can we send them a letter or call them and tell them?
They have a meeting next Tuesday, so I will make sure. They had it on their agenda for last month, I believe, and I'll make sure that...
They know that, you know, they need to budget that in?
Yes.
Yes, Linda?
I don't want you to think the park board is just sitting on this because I know that they came to the chamber. They had to wait for the chamber to have a meeting to discuss their insurance. We just did that a couple weeks ago. And I assume the chamber president got back to the park board. But I mean, this is all going to take some time for them. So I don't think it's fair to lie that they're just sitting on it or they can use the 50% to fight. I think they are actually actively working on it. And are you suggesting that you're going to charge them in this fiscal year for something they didn't budget for?
This would be very, it's 17 budget.
Seventeen, so they will be able to budget for it.
And it wouldn't be just the park. It would be the police would have to pay their own insurance. The park would pay their own insurance. Water would pay their own insurance and sewer would pay their own insurance. And then general, we would pay like City Hall and that. So it's, we're not just saying just the park has to pay it and we're going to pay from general funds, everybody else is. It's, everybody would have to stop paying.
I learned when I heard the 50% number, how the park could go 50%.
No. No, it would be each individual section would be in charge of their own insurance. So like water and sewer would have, it would come out of their budget as well and out of the police budget as well. It would not just be the park department.
Do we have to have a motion or anything for that?
I make a motion that Jane gets a hold of the park board and tell them what their portion of the insurance would be.
For their 2017...
Yeah, 2017.
Because currently, we paint it.
Yeah, we paid for 2016. Yeah, for 2017.
I second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, nay? So that is all for unfinished business. Next up, we have our ordinances, beginning with Bill number 2016-25, become ordinance number 224, the dangerous buildings and admin review procedure. Yeah. 824? Oh, sorry, 824, ordinance 824, I'm sorry.
I'm digging for 224. I'm panicking.
Jane, would you like to do the first reading for us?
An ordinance amending chapter 505 relating to the dangerous buildings and adding an administrative review procedure.
Any questions, discussions? Would you care to do the second reading, please?
An ordinance amending chapter 505 relating to the dangerous buildings and adding the administrative review procedure.
Do I have a motion to make Bill number 2016-25 into ordinance 824?
I make a motion that we make Bill number 2016-25 into ordinance number 824.
I will second.
Alderman Justice?
Aye.
Alderman Hazy?
Aye.
Alderman Relling?
Aye.
Alderman Gergich?
Aye.
Bill number 2016 becomes ordinance 24. Next up, we have Bill number 2016-26, which is amending sections 300.020. Jane, would you mind doing the first reading for us?
An ordinance amending section 300.020, definition, section 100.100, general penalty, section 215.010, nuisance affecting health, and section 215.040, weeds of the Gerald Missouri City Code.
Any questions or discussion about... Second reading, please, Jane?
An ordinance amending section 300.020, definitions, section 100.100, general penalty, section 215.010, nuisance affecting health, and section 215.040, weeds of the Gerald Missouri City Code.
Do I have a motion to make Bill number 2016-26 into ordinance number 825?
I motion that Bill number 2016-26 be adopted as ordinance number 825.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Justice?
Aye.
Alderman Hazy?
Aye.
Alderman Wright?
Aye.
Alderman Gergich?
Aye.
Bill number 2016 dash 26 becomes ordinance number eight twenty-five. Um, next up, we have Bill number 2016 dash 27, which has to do with amending chapter 210 offenses. Jane, would you mind doing the first reading?
An ordinance amending chapter 210 relating to the offenses of the Gerald Missouri City Code and providing the repeal of existing code chapter 210 and providing when this ordinance shall become effective.
Where is this from the bill?
This is all the Senate Bill five updates.
Okay, yeah, I remember that.
Any questions, discussions? Second reading, please, Jane.
An ordinance amending chapter 210 relating to offenses of the Gerald Missouri City Code and providing the repeal of existing code chapter 210 and providing when this ordinance shall become effective.
Do I have a motion to make Bill number 2016 dash 27?
I make a motion that we make Bill 2016 dash 27, ordinance number eight twenty-six.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Alderman Justice?
Aye.
Alderman Hazy?
Aye.
Alderman Wright?
Aye.
Alderman Gergich?
Aye.
Bill number 2016 dash 27 becomes ordinance eight twenty-six. Um, next, we have Bill number 2016 dash 28, um, which is the Franklin County 9/11 dispatching services agreement. Jane, would you mind doing the first reading?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute dispatching service agreement with Franklin County, Missouri.
Any questions, discussion? Would you mind doing the second reading?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a dispatching services agreement with Franklin County, Missouri.
Do I have a motion to make Bill number 2016 dash 28 into ordinance eight twenty-seven?
I'll make a motion to we make Bill number 2016 dash 28 into ordinance number eight twenty-seven.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alderman Justice?
Aye.
Alderman Hazy?
Aye.
Alderman Wright?
Aye.
Alderman Gergich?
Aye.
Bill number 2016 dash 28 becomes ordinance eight twenty-seven. Um, we have nothing for new business this month.
Yeah.
Alderman Justice, do you have anything for us tonight?
No, I took care of mine.
Alderman Hazy?
No.
Alderman Wright?
No.
Alderman Gergich?
Yes, I have two items. Uh, item number one, I'd like to motion that we provide the funds to the P and Z so that we can have a public hearing, so that we can move forward on the city plan.
Is there a second for, is that the motion?
That's the motion. Without, without the funds, we can't go any further with this.
This is after discussion. I just think we need to wait till our new budget, because this is gonna be a lot of money. We have to pay for Steve to come out. Um, the ad in the paper is always high and the recording fees, I just feel like right now, we're so close to the end of the year, kinda like stepping back with the signs. I think we need to kinda slow down on what we're, I, I wanna get it done, Steve, I just think right now is not the time.
Yes, I kinda sense that, I mean, there's a little bit of confusion on the planning zone anyway.
Right, yeah.
I, I'm, you know, including myself, even I.
I'm not sure, right. And I've read over that too, and there's a couple of questions I also have, but I mean, if that's.
We, yeah, we just table it till they meet and they're all on the same page and then bring it?
Right.
I mean, it's not that hard pressed, is there?
I would, I agree with.
And then that way, we can have it in our budget for next year as well.
Right, right.
Because we have the budget, the recording fees, and that Wednesday too, it's not just the putting it in the papers, that way Mr. Lucas can be there and any questions that anybody would have at that meeting can be answered in.
So, yeah, I agree, it's just wait a while with this and it's, you know, it's nothing that we have to hurry up and get through, let's stop and, and look at, you know, get our budget all in order and do that.
I request that we put under unfinished business then for the next meeting.
And then you have the topic, or you have number two?
My number two. Uh, we have currently, uh, we attended a municipality dinner in Sullivan. And in regards to the upcoming eclipse, there's gonna be a great demand for room, this, that, and the other. This is just kind of forward-looking, uh, city communities that have housing, excuse me, not housing, temporary rooming, motels, trailer parks, this type of thing, Motel Six. They typically charge a room tax per night, not much money, two or three dollars if you go almost any community, if you examine your bill. This is monies that are earmarked for the, ask, ask the community for certain, uh, activities, whether it be a special fund or whatever. I just would like to notify the board that we need to consider this, because we have been approached at the P and Z, tentatively, with somebody wanting to come in and do such a development. At this point, they are not, uh, firm yet in their endeavors, they're trying to find funding and things of this nature. They have said that they would come back to the P and Z, and I just think being proactive, that we ought to give this some consideration, so.
What are they wanting to do? To build a motel?
Like a bed and breakfast or?
Basically, it, without divulging too much at this time, because it's, it is, she approached the P and Z, we already know that there were some issues with zoning that would be easily taken care of, uh, amending. But it's just the idea that if we ever have a situation where somebody comes in and does a development, such as a Motel Six, we would, it would benefit us to have this on the young board.
Well, I hope it's not a trailer park, we got enough of those.
Well, once again, anything that comes to the city, once again, goes to the P and Z. The P and Z gets to see that they comply, prints would be approved, and then it would come to the board for approval. I'm just saying that we need to consider a room tax. And we don't have to act on, let's do it, you know, let's charge them a thousand dollars a night, you know, none of that type of stuff. I'm just saying that we need to consider. For every, for every motel room, hotel room in the city of Washington, they get three dollars and fifty cents a night occupied. That can't charge it if nobody's picking up the tab. But if they have sixty units and they have 50% occupancy and they charge three dollars and fifty cents a night, that is $750 a night that goes into their coffers.
But we're talking about Gerald, Missouri here. I mean, how are we gonna get a big hotel or anything big inside, could you, Gerald? You know, even if we have a ten room, you know?
I, I understand that. I understand that presently, we don't have nothing. All I, all I've said was that that is a funding.
Just think about it.
To think about it. Previously, we brought to this board and we fought, like the P and Z fought to have the zoning codes. And there was a fight going about town at that time, that if we had codes, we would scare business away. We didn't get any business when we didn't have codes. We have gotten business since we have codes. Just bring it into your attention, because.
Anything else for tonight? Alderman Gergich?
Uh, no. Thank you.
The only thing I have tonight is, I just wanted to commend the Lions Club for the Veterans Day Parade and service that they had up at the Legion Park the other day. It was really nice. And then also, just to let the city know that Brian Deal, um, at his residence again this year, from November 27th through January, 25th, through January 5th, um, he will be having his light show again this year. Each week will actually be something different from crack, so if everybody wants to check that out, pass the word around, something good for our town, brings a lot of people in, so.
I agree with Hillary, the, the Veterans Parade was very nice that you guys didn't go to, it was very nice. Lions Club did a nice job on that one.
And also tomorrow is Veterans Day, so make sure you are thanking anybody that has served previously or is serving now, um, because they have given us the freedoms and rights that we do have.
And I do wanna say, people, put your green lights out for the veterans. I think there's five in our whole town, there's not very many. We have more than five veterans.
That is all I have for tonight. Um, if I could have a motion then to go into executive session?
I make a motion, we go into executive meeting under six one zero point zero two one one R S M O.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alderman Justice?
Aye.
Alderman Hazy?
Aye.
Alderman Wright?
Aye.
Alderman Gergich?
Aye.
Were you thinking about it?
We'll pay attention.